Robin Hensel, 807 First Street Southeast. It's been two years. September 16th, 2013 is when I asked this council for the first time to make those restrooms into disability friendly. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart for doing that, looking into that and working on that sonny agenda tonight to approve the architect, to design it. I'd like to also read something from what I discovered online. In August 1945, atomic bombs reduced the cities of Hiroshima and Nagasaki within minutes to rubble and killed hundreds of thousands of its citizens. Today, almost 60 years after the war, thousands of people in both cities still suffer from the trauma and the devastating effects, the after-effects of radiation. To prevent any repetition of the use of atomic bombs, the cities of Hiroshima and Nagasaki have continued to stop to remind the world of the inhuman cruelty of nuclear weapons and have consistently urged the abolition of such weapons. Why this is important, Mr. Mayor, is that there is this wonderful organization called Mayors for Peace, and it aims to build solidarity and facilitate coordination of cities that support the program to promote the solidarity of cities toward the total abolition of nuclear weapons. Its primary goal is to work intentionally to raise consciousness regarding nuclear weapons abolition. It also formally committed to pursuing lasting world peace by working to address starvation, poverty, refugee welfare, human rights abuses, and environmental destruction. And I would like to recommend that you join the 554 other mayors of cities that are members of this. I'd like to ask, I don't believe, I frequent the parks a lot with my little granddaughter, and I haven't seen any smoking signs in anywhere in city parks. But yet there's a law that states it's illegal to smoke in those parks. I'm not understanding how you can have a law, enforce the law, and then alert the public that there is even this law without the signage. That's a problem. And then I want to remind you of this article that was written by Sandra Okroy about the dam festival. And I can personally tell you I was down at the dam festival the day after it happened, and I've never seen so many cigarette butts in that park in my life. Now, what is the sense in having a law and not enforcing it? From the minutes of the council meeting, in case I get, well, maybe I have to finish this last time, but next time, rather, Don Klinker said, "In these council chambers, why have a law you don't enforce in relation to trying to pass the same cigarette banning in parks in 2004, November 26, 2004?" And he and Kate Davis were concerned about this, so was former Mayor Kathy Benrisingh. I would agree. Why have a law-
Time's up, Robin. Thank you.
-that you're not going to enforce?
Anyone else wish to speak?
Bill Anderson, 14452 Elm Street. I come before the council tonight to make a recommendation to see if it's all possible that we can get the cul-de-sac on Elm Street back where it was. In 2005, the city constructed a water sewer down Elm Street, and we were told on Elm Street that the road is going to go in the same way it came out, cul-de-sac is going to be the same way it came out, and when it was said and done, it was incomplete. I have a petition signed by other people on Elm Street requesting for the cul-de-sac to come back. We've had several different occasions on Elm Street, and one was yesterday afternoon. We had a Dodge pickup truck with dual tires in the back with a 40-foot camper on it and a 24-foot boat behind it, you know, fifth-wheel camper with a boat behind it. And what happens, folks, is this, is they come around, and where it says 10 to Motley, they miss the turn. And they come around the corner, and they take the first, you know, the first left, thinking that's it, and they're on the cul-de-sac. It's impossible to get these things turned around in there. While three weeks ago, the Mickey Bless line left soccer field, probably thinking it was going to be able to take a shortcut and came down there, one heck of a time trying to turn around. Anderson for Frazee had a bust in there. We've had semis come down there, and we try to get them out of there, it's almost totally impossible unless driving on people's property. So at that time, the cul-de-sac was 66 feet. I did talk to the engineer when they put the pump in on Elm Street, "Thank you, people, for allowing that to happen, or maybe the water problem we solved on Elm Street. Thank you." I did talk to Mr. Kimmon about this, and a couple days later, I get a phone call back, and it says, "Bill," he said, "you know, there's seven or eight people on Elm Street that don't want the cul-de-sac." Well, guess what, gentlemen? There are four houses down there. There's four houses. That's all that's down there. So all we're asking for is if we could possibly get the cul-de-sac back the way it was in 2005, like Mr. Lockner said, we're going to take the road out, put the water sewer in, and we're going to put it back in the way it was. So I'm asking if it's possible to get the cul-de-sac back. And then I have a letter for you, Mr. Kimmon from Byrd. Explain the differences out here. And then also, one other thing I got from the council, I'll share it with you. Bruce Smith called me today. He has acquired a new lawyer out of Cold Spring, Minnesota, and we have a letter. I'm going to share it with you. The copy did go to Roaches, and it has to do with the easement road that goes into that property of Byrd's back there, Eagle Musky House. And it took, from the time it started till today, to get that road open again. You know, the road was completely, completely blocked with sand, I mean dirt, sand. For about three nights, the big excavator was stuck, was right in the middle of the road. So if there would have been a fire back there, if Byrd would have been living back there and needed an ambulance back there, it was totally, it was totally, we couldn't get it. So, you know, we, I went back this afternoon to look. The dirt has been moved. It's like a sand pit now, so if anybody does go back, you're going to be set.
Okay. Who do I give the petition to if I can take those?
This is the petition I'll protect. This is the letter I am describing, what cul-de-sac, what people want. This is the one that I want to-
Sound good. Thanks, Bill. Anyone else wish to speak?
Oh, my name is John Lang. Once applied for two year over there. Bill's right on. I was just wondering if, I live right directly on the end of Elm Street. You come down Elm Street, you run right into my house. Now, when these people come around the curve, Mr. Loder, is that your name? You've seen the cars, you've been at my place. You've seen the cars turning around. I get at least 40 to 50 people at the semis. Like when the Lee Fest is on, it's terrible. They all turn around on my driveway, and the ones that don't, they go down to Bill's. And I was wondering if maybe you could put the all flashing light on that Highway 10 sign to maybe get the people's attention somehow. Because this has been an ongoing problem for years now. I don't know if you'd need to talk to Midnight, or if that's something you guys can do. I don't know, or Mr. Kimmon. I don't know, but somehow we've got to get their attention. They missed the ramp on Highway 10, and it's just unbelievably ongoing. And I appreciate if you can think of some solution. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else wish to speak? All right, now, we'll move on to regular agenda items. Little Falls Baseball Association update. Kurt, do you have some?
Um, yes, actually, Lori and I did meet with some representatives from the school. They asked us to be with them, and we discussed some things regarding the belt very fields, and they were not able to make it tonight. Rusty, who was spearheading it-
He did.
-and he had class on Tuesday nights, so he set it up and then figured out if that lucky Monday was a Tuesday. But what I was wondering before you related to that is, I sent Dan something this afternoon, asked him how to approach it. I got an email for a grant application for lighting for the soccer fields, and it came from Kate Bjorgi, and she wants to know if the council or the mayor would be in favor of writing a letter, supporting that for that area. And the schools are fine with it, it's their property. The only thing would be is, you know, like Jeremy said, you have to make sure the lights aren't shining in some days, or in the evening, and probably time limits, but she's on the short timeline for that, so I don't know if that's something we can look at in my year's agenda. If we graduate and talk to people and then put it on the next one, I think that would help a bit. Anybody have any questions or comments on that? Questions for me?
Oh, this is a letter of support I drew from the mayor to apply for a grant, so when we talked, we even talked, it says just more than the council authorized the application for a grant. So it seems very simple, doesn't it?
I can suggest you do it the same way.
Put it on the consent agenda.
Very hard time to write the letter, but I thought Kate wanted to-
They can just get put on the consent agenda, correct? Where do you need to bring it around?
Put it on the order. Either way, that's fine.
Put on the consent agenda.
Bill? So as far as Little Falls Baseball Association, what would you suggest you can talk about? Just on my experience?
No, about the possibility of at least spearheading this group to, they're discussing whether or not it's feasible to build new baseball fields on the Belt Ferry.
Right on the fault.
Right by the soccer fields. And he said there's room for it. They've spoken about it with the soccer association, and I don't want to steal all of it, it's under his thunder. He's got a lot of-
That's true to schools versus like, we're trying to get soccer going out in that same area.
Yep.
I think it's the south. I think it's the south end of where the soccer field is.
Yep, way in the south.
Way in the south. I didn't think there was room, but I think there is room. And I think soccer people have agreed that there's enough room for playing soccer and having baseball fields on.
Yeah, I know for, we discussed that before, but it's always been said there wasn't any room.
Yeah.
So if you have to remove a lot of trees or something.
I don't know. I haven't talked to Rusty. I don't know if that's set up to take some of those trees, you know, there's like a buffer between roads and the soccer field. I don't know if they plan on taking some of them trees back on the south end to make more room for the, so the ball fields fit in there. I don't know.
And Rusty is presenting this independent of the school, correct, Lori?
Yes.
It's kind of in conjunction, and, you know, we had discussed, is there anything we could possibly do to help them with that? But Rusty is doing this as a community member, and he said he's got a lot of backing for, they want to deal with seed grants, but he's got a lot of backing for, well, the fields are there, and so, you know, you can go on the excavating.
Pretty level and everything already.
Already a lot easier than trying to start from scratch, but he's got people donating for prepping parking lots, and so Rusty's really, Rusty's really excited about it, and, you know, he's done similar things at Royalton because he's got a baseball coach there, and so he just copied one day by the department at Covert's and-
I think any fields would be nice for where they go.
Yep, definitely. I think it'd be a great addition for the community.
I think Rusty also should check in with the military, I mean, at camp. When we did the work over with the hockey rink, I mean, it was, everybody that was over there working enjoyed doing it because instead of just practicing grading here and grading there, you're actually doing a project that you can say, "I helped do that," or "I helped them," and it can be talked out there at camp. The engineers would be more than willing to. If there's something they can do, like a parking lot or something like that.
Anyone else on that one?
Lori, do you have anything I missed?
So for the consent agenda to authorize your letter approval, is there a-
Okay, thank you.
Oppose 2016 levies and budget?
Dan and Lori?
Yeah, Lori and I'll probably tag team a little bit on this. For you new members, the way our budgeting works, our fiscal year obviously is January 1st to December 31st, but by law, we have to set the preliminary levy by the end of this month. So by the end of September, it used to be the middle of September, I first started it was October 10th, it was the middle of September, it's the end of September. By the end of September, you have to set a preliminary levy. Your final levy cannot go above your preliminary levy. It can go backwards, it can go down, but it cannot go up. So just as an FYI, the rest, the full budget, all of the budget numbers, the detail, will be, will be getting to you, or somebody else will be getting to you later this year, John and Lori. But, you know, to start with, I've got a few slides and-
Sorry, Frank and Brad are getting to my head.
Just a few, a few sheets that I'd like to go over quickly with you from this-
I need glasses, we've got issues.
I've got worse. Somebody that's got eyes. Some of the levy considerations that we're looking at for 2016, we did receive, or will receive, additional local government aid from the state of Minnesota in the amount of $14,460, so that's helpful. On the expense side, however, the city administrator, going from where I'm at, part-time to full-time, you might recall in the 20, oh, no, we're here, would recall the 2015 budget, we budgeted about a half of a city administrator, thinking that we have the process done about mid-year, while obviously that didn't occur, so, but we've got the other half to put in the budget. Some discussion of using contract, perhaps myself, to do union negotiations. John could sit in on that, maybe do the first round, and then he can take over as time goes on, because he doesn't have experience there. Looking at some summer help in streets and parks, attorney fees, and elections. Every other year, we have elections, so, you know, the budget is pretty good from that standpoint in those off-years. Parks, so we're just talking a little bit about some of the needs in the Little Falls area or migration complex. Could be included with the baseball or ball fields. He also got the Little Falls youth baseball, was just talking about agency funding. A big one here is that Animal of Humane Society. I don't think that the county's going to come in with more money than they have now, so it's really what's going to happen to the Animal of Humane Society in the long run. We have negative fund balances in the golf course operating and zoo improvement funds. We've talked about those over the years. We also need to build up cash balances for city policy, and also the state auditor's office has policy on cash balances too, and we should take a look at those. What we've done in past years, and suggested for this year as well, is to take a look at the levy from the standpoint of previous years upon that may impact future years. Here's the 2015 levy. We levied $3.5 million total. It was about a 10% increase in the levy alone, but the tax rate actually went down, and that's because of the whole area on the north side that was annexed in, that value all came in. So the tax rate went up, the tax levy went up, and the actual rate went down. As you can see, our rate, and this is a new column this year, I wanted to give you an historical perspective on the rates we've had for taxes over the years. You know, if you can get yourself down in that 50, 60 range, I think that's where you probably want to be. I'm going to show you some information, some comparative data as well. But anyhow, what we do is give you three options, A, B, and C here, and that would include a 3%, a 4%, or about a 5% increase in your levy. Again, as I said earlier, you cannot go above what you set at this point. So whenever all those numbers come in, all your detail comes in, you can't go up as far as getting into levy. What we wanted to do too here is try to get an idea where that city rate might be based on these levy amounts, but the county doesn't have all their information to us at this point, and it's not available, so we can't try to plug that in. Now, we will, I think, have better information as we get later in the year, or as year later in the year, so we'll probably be able to see that. Then you can see how those adjustments might affect, affect the tax rate. We're not looking for action tonight, I just wanted to just mention that as well. So we're just trying to give you an idea of where things stand at this point.
Will we have those numbers from the county before the end of the month, when we have them?
I doubt it. Well, I would, before the end of the year.
You know, I'm just saying, because I live in the Belt Ferry area. People's taxes went up 40 to 70% last year. I don't think they would be very pleased with another increase on top of that.
No. So if you, I mean, if you want to keep your levy at the same as it is this year, I mean, obviously, there's going to be some cuts. I got to go back to that previous page and start making some adjustments on the expense side, obviously. Just as a database from the, from the area where I used to work in Brainerd, we've got a 23% in the last two years, and they're looking at another 10 or 15% this year. Cross Lake, just where I'm also working, just set the preliminary levy a 15% increase of the tax rate substantially more than yours, because they have so much tax base. But just, just as a perspective, not to say I'm advocating it should substantially increase or not.
Dan?
Now, when we set the preliminary levy, what's the last, because we can lower it, we can't raise it, so what's the last day that we can lower?
You can lower, you got till the end of the year to set your levy.
Yep.
The end of, end of December. So between now and the end of December, you're going to have some budget meetings, you know, John and Lori will be presenting you all the detail, and you're going to get an idea of what those numbers, you know, how those numbers shake out from our total budget. As you can see in here, we're not looking at a lot of, you know, staff is your biggest expense. You're a service organization, and you provide service, obviously, staff is going to be one of the biggest, probably the biggest expense from an operational standpoint. So we're not looking at major adjustments, staff, obviously, other than the full-time city administrator. But I wanted to give you some tax rate comparisons with, this is kind of the group that the city years ago has said makes some sense for us to do some comparisons with. As you can see, and this is 2014, the 2015 I have, but I don't have it for all these other cities, I just have Little Falls. But anyway, you can see here, from a comparative standpoint, and we're on the high end, there's only three cities that have a higher city tax rate in this comparative group that we're using. And you can see there's some communities in the area, as well as statewide, Sartell and Sauk Rapids, and Brainerd, et cetera. How does that relate when you look at the total tax rate? You know, cities often get the blame for the taxes being too high, but remember, there's three major taxing jurisdictions, city, county, and school district. But from a total tax rate standpoint, you know, we're on the high end too. We only dropped one notch, you know, when I went from how the city compares from the standpoint of city rate versus the total rate. So if you look at the previous sheet, you can see that kind of the, kind of the middle ground is in that 60% range in that area, and as you can see, we're up here at 76 now. To get it down, you know, to this range, you know, I don't know how you can do it.
Dan, you look at a lot of those-
Maybe adjustments.
You look at a lot of them, they have local option sales tax, though, that are helping pay for some of their-
Yeah, they probably do. I mean, there's a number, I know Herman does, Sartell, I don't know if Alex does, or DDL, Baxter does, Brainerd does, Sauk Rapids does, Lake Park does, so a lot of those are in there as well. So anyway, it's just, you need to be thinking about, you know, what you're thinking from a levy standpoint, you know, what it is. It's majority vote of all of you and how you feel, where you think the levy should be. It's been our practice, at least the few years that I've been here in the lake, and we can talk about, no longer than that, to set the rate at a place that you could probably reduce. As you can see, we reduced here in 2014. You know, I don't think we've, I'd have to go back and see if we've kept the levy what we set it at, at the preliminary, if we've kept that at the final. You know, you can get the, I think, the rhetoric that, oh, if you set it, it'll never go down, and, you know, we wanted to prove that wrong, and we also wanted to prove that we can lower that rate, obviously, we've done that in the last few years. So at least, anyway, you need to be thinking about this for your next council meeting at this time. Lori, I don't know what, do you want to go through any other?
Well, the only other thing, I guess, on that particular spreadsheet, that's kind of hard to see, but on the very bottom, there's also information as far as debt levy requirements, where our debt levy is, and in, you know, our requirement for this year is based, or pay 2016 is about $1,000 less than 2015. Then in 2017, at this point, if we don't add any additional debt, you know, we're $88,000 less in 2017, $32,000 less in 2018, and then in 2019 is when we see the big drop. We have a payment that comes out, so our levy then is $239 less than the previous year, $239,000 less. But that, again, is assuming we aren't adding any additional debt. So if we add, you know, new street projects next year, we add debt, those numbers are going to change.
Well, also, I think towards, I don't know, when do you do the water sewer rates? Those are done-
Usually in December will be the level of stuff, yeah.
Usually make adjustments in water sewer rates? You know, as we've talked about over the last, you know, month or two with Greg's brought it in, is you've got substantial costs, expenses coming up in the future in those areas, and your rates, I mean, you can't cover what you're trying to do with the rates that you have, but you're just going to keep going down. So either you've got to adjust your plans, or you have to adjust your rates, so one way or the other, things have to change. We'll be presenting more information on that, but, you know, it's worthwhile to think about that as you're going to talk about spending $160,000, potential of spending that on the SEH plant. If you're not going to do that project as soon as, like, next year, the year after, the year after, it's no use spending $160 this year, because you're just going to have to redo the work.
Be outdated by now.
Push it off. So, you know, it's, you got to be thinking, thinking that through, what can we do down the road, and what can we afford? And we've got some additional information, I don't know which one to put up on the board.
Do you want to tackle that now, or?
Well, I don't, I don't know. We can talk about it when the item comes up as well, so. But anyway, no decision needed tonight, we just wanted to start that conversation going so you could, you know, think about it, and what you think might make some sense, but certainly, you know, keeping in mind those that have just any sense, you know, some annual adjustments and that.
Dan, I just say that, you know, it always looks, looks the best to go with the lowest, but then realism sets in, and if you set it at 299 and figure out what new administrator and all these things, you need 301 or whatever, and you set it to a preliminary, then you can't go up, correct?
Correct.
So, you know, there's nothing wrong with setting it at the 4 or 499 and then bringing it down, and I think that's been the history for both school board entries.
How much, how much is it per percent?
It was $37,000.
$37,000 per percent. Thirty-seven thousand dollars per percent. So per percent, and when you think about thirty-some thousand dollars is not much. When you, when you, when you talk about the pickup rate.
One percent.
One percent only, it's thirty-some thousand dollars. It's not too dissimilar to the other city of one-four thousand, about forty percent.
And to Dan's point too, I mean, I can say we have had a history here where we do set the levy higher and we've always brought it down. I don't, I can't remember when our preliminary levy has been our final levy. Every time we've done it, then I can remember, we've always come down because, you know, we take a look at things, make the adjustments, and then you can bring it down, so.
The only time we hear about our preliminary levy is when it's election year. See, you know, somebody who's running always says, well, they've set this seventeen percent levy. We understood the whole time was going to back down. We have to set it high in case if things do come up like we were talking about, we don't want to be short funded. So we set it a little bit higher just to make sure if we have to, we can crawl up a little bit, so. But every year I've been on council, we've dropped it.
Did you know that one, Dan?
Yes.
Make any questions for him? Dave Miller Auctions, Surplus Items, Laurie?
Um, just for your information, the surplus items that were brought to the, were picked up at the Miller, fine Miller auction, and the auction was held in Sauk Rapids. The city ended up netting just over three-thousand-six-hundred dollars from that auction. So, you know, it was a pretty good deal. And most downtime was involved in it, you know, other than being over there when they got it lowered, but they took care of everything they had with the auction, it's gone, and we netted three-thousand-six-hundred dollars.
Is everything pretty much cleaned out of there?
Yes.
Just in itself, that's a good feeling because otherwise it's deteriorating.
Did they do anything with those whoops, do they know where in that?
You know, they're still downstairs, but we're out of all of them. Came, I was going to have the guys bring them up and bring them over there for him to look at, and he totally spaced it out. So those are still sitting downstairs, so maybe at some point we'll get them to.
Proposed 2016 straight-up road projects, Greg?
Remember, we're just talking budget, I don't know where. All right, I'll kind of run through this quick, you got that in front of you as well, I apologize for the screen as you can barely read that. This is again, basically, a picture of a sanitary sewer map. The green on there is clay pipe and the red is PVC. Generally, from two-thousand, mid-nineties on forward, we put in PVC sanitary sewer pipe. That pipe is generally more watertight than the clay pipe. The clay generally has a tendency to crack, break, let water flow in. And as you can see, the west side, we've got quite a bit of that green area as well as on the east side. The difference between the east and the west is that on the west side, that was mainly built around the sixties and seventies. So it's newer, hasn't been in the ground as long, but it's still something that we want to address as time progresses. So the older pipe in the area of more concern for me is the east side of town where we've got the old sanitary sewer, the old clay pipe that has a tendency to crack. This next picture here is a couple of paysurating. This is where we have basically the condition of our roads. The green, which is our newer construction, which is on the second sheet, those are roads that are in good condition. Really don't have to do a whole lot in terms of maintenance on those. The orange is kind of in the middle where it's, we either need to do some conditioning to it to prolong it or it's going to turn into the red where we can't really, can't really fix it. The red area, which again is mainly on the east side, is roads that haven't been taken care of for quite a while. Their cracks are quite wide and they're a candidate for reconstruction. So overlaying those two, knowing that we've got the red streets, the four streets, and the older utilities, that's kind of where I focused on the east side for reconstruction projects. And on the west side, where we've got a little bit newer sanitary sewer, we looked at those roads that were either orange or green to preserve them to last over longer in terms of time. So looking at a map, kind of what we have is called our CIP for our street utilities. And again, I apologize, this is the overall city map. This is what we did last year, this period in orange in terms of providing the maintenance, we put in a seal coat as well as fog sealing over those areas, trying to get those roads to last as long as they can. From there, we're basically going to be working east towards the river, and I'll zoom into that one. And as Dan mentioned, you know, this is dependent upon budgets and likely it will shrink once we get closer to quantities and stuff. But we're looking at extending from tenth over the next three or four blocks to take care of this chunk of streets because it is in decent condition, the utilities aren't to a point yet where they need to be reconstructed. So we're going to try to preserve that pavement as long as possible. Again, that's dependent upon what the budgets look like once we get to that. For street reconstruction projects, right now, what we're looking at, and we've got four areas here, and I know this is not going to be able to fit in our budgets right off the get-go. We do have a stretch, a one-block stretch on Fourth Street southwest where we've already had two service line breaks. It's a service that goes all the way down, about half of the block, and then it connects into a house. We had two breaks there, one each year. Third Avenue, again, we've got a private outer service going down, getting three homes, like, if that one takes care of.
That's the one that we didn't do this year?
That was the one we didn't do this year, so we carried it over. Third Street northeast, that would be an extension from where we left off in fourteen, and this was a fifteen project. So we'd be finishing this off up to the railroad tracks. That sewer up there, you know, it comes up and down, it has those bellies in it, just like we saw on this year's project. Fourth Avenue northeast, this was constructed in the seventies if I remember correctly. But if you drive that stretch on the south side, you can see exactly where Storm Sewer is at. There's a big bump in the road. Flows catch that every year when they're driving, plow, and it's a difficult road to maintain and plow and try to keep free of snow and ice just because of the condition over there. So if there's any other projects that you guys can think of, let me know so we can, you know, look at them and kind of evaluate them and see where they all fit, but that's, those are my four target areas right now. And we'll see what prior is what he wants to be, get to the feasibility reports and see where all the numbers come in.
Greg, do we base the width of our roads on traffic count?
We do.
Our state aid, our combination of a bunch of things, or?
On our state aid roads, they have minimum widths based on the traffic counts. And our policy has kind of been going that direction as well for the various other streets, the non-state aid ones. Looking at how much traffic goes on those roads as well as looking at, do the properties adjacent would have garages and stuff? If you have a garage, you're more likely to park your car in your garage. But the street width is based off of the A-18, yes.
I hate to bring up the.
Third Street?
No, the no parking in the road because that took my first two years on the council and we didn't do anything. If you look at like Third Street, it's some of these streets when there's cars on both sides of the road, it looks like if there's a little bit of a snowbank and you're a little bit farther, is there going to be an issue? And are we going to need, as we do it based on traffic count, are we going to have to look at some sort of no parking on?
The middle would go to thirty-two feet. And so that should leave enough for parking on one side. Generally, looking at those types of road because there's not a lot of traffic volume in through there, you don't have two cars parked across the street from one another. So that's why we look at traffic counts and, you know, do they have garages? Because likely you're going to park in your garage. So we kind of evaluate that when we choose the street width for the area. So that's what we've got right now that we're looking at for our 2016 projects and depending on what budgets look like.
The one that's Fourth Avenue?
Yep.
That's just put in nineteen-eighty-one, is this optusade, read that?
We would probably have to do a subgrade correction on there because the road does heave in the wintertime. So we'd have to dig down three feet and build up from that.
The utilities don't need to be replaced?
The utilities don't need to be replaced, we'd probably have to do some bedding around the Storm Sewer. Price-wise, I don't have dollar marks for that, but it is one that we're looking at. That's what I, all I have really for the street reconstruction, the street projects.
Make any questions for Greg on the street projects? Suggestions, recommendations?
I had a question, I noticed when I was looking before we started, kind of down along in front of the theater, are eighteen-ninety is the day on the pipes?
Yes.
Were you able to put a camera through, are they in decent shape or are they really bad?
Most of that is underwater, so we can't really tell. But that's the area, you have these going on Trump Highway four, so that's the area that we want to reconstruct in 2018 with the road to the ten dot.
Okay, so I'll probably answer my next question.
And then on top of that, we'd likely be looking at First Street section probably in twenty-nineteen, excuse me, twenty-twenty. That's going to be a very expensive project, so we'd be looking at getting some additional funds, grant funds for that because they have concrete pavement, rent below the blocktop that you see because it used to be Old Highway three-seventy-one that went through there, Highway ten, I should say. They had concrete down below that and they put a blocktop on top of it. So we'd be looking to get some additional funds to pull that concrete up into their block sets and that cost.
It is a phaser rating of the one he's talking about.
Yep.
Between seven and ten, which is really good.
They recently did an over the M.I.S.
So that's one of them, you have to wonder, maybe it would have been nice if we could go in a little deeper and fix up everything at one time.
Well, the thing is with the grant funds that we'd be looking at, they're out five years. So you've got to plan five years out for what you're going to do. That road was in some pretty shuffish shape when they did that overlay. And I don't think they had time necessarily to grant or to go after those grant funds before they had to do something.
I liken your presentations, you showed this because it makes a little more sense, you know, having all the information, what's underneath, what the road is, how important it is, easier to make decisions versus, well, that road's bad, so we're just going to throw an overlay on it and then in a couple of years, it'll crumble underneath, so.
Anything else there before we move on?
Okay, landscape, City Hall, eyes will hit it all, right? All right, what we're looking at doing, this is a picture that I took last year on our roof before we had it replaced. You can see here, there's the cedar tree and the pine trees. The roofing contractor actually had me come up there and take a look at this. This is all pine needles that are blown onto the roof. There's a concern with all of the trees, the pine trees around there, all of those needles get onto the roof and they start plugging up the catch basins and the Dallas plugs and such. With our particular roof here, we only have one drain on there. This is the new roof that we have up there and that wasn't even a very large drain event. But you can see all those pine needles, they go right to the one drain and they plug up. So there's a potential that if we get too heavy of a rain and don't catch that in terms of cleaning that out, we could flood that roof and cause some major problems. So what I'm looking at doing here, this is a picture from Google Earth, what City Hall looks like. You can see the pine trees around here on both sides. Basically, what I'm looking at doing is taking out the pine trees because of the need to try to keep that off of the roof to keep that open. Put some hedges along sidewalk during the wintertime, the snow, the wind coming from the northeast blows in over here and this gets plugged up pretty heavily, so we're out there every hour shoveling that snow. In addition to that, also plantings around the city, around the sideline side, and a couple of smaller trees away from the building so that it doesn't cause that same problem right at City Hall. And then in the back, this is our new ramp that we've installed, doing a little bit of upgrades over there. You know, the light poles, tree, or the plantings over here, then the paper patio type of thing in that double triangular area. I did get some pricing on having somebody install it, that was more expensive than what we had originally anticipated. So what I'm looking at doing, a west side here, otherwise, is looking at what it would cost just to procure the individual plantings and material themselves and have our guys install them. I think we can do it a lot more cost-effective that way as opposed to having somebody else install them. One other thing that I would like to point out, right now, we don't have any irrigation on the ground. So whenever it gets really hot and we need to water anything, we've got to pull one of the street guys over, basically chase a sprinkler around to keep that somewhat green. So we've been looking at possibly throwing in a sprinklers system over here to try to keep City Hall looking somewhat nice. That's what we have, kind of on tap at least for the last meeting at City Hall this time of year.
Sounds like a lot of it is competitive maintenance, but that will pay for itself at some point.
True, true.
And I am a strong believer in a decent looking facility outside of, you know, so.
Right, and you know, like you touched on there, Greg, it's what everybody sees when they come to City Hall, this is what little faults starts with this. We're not going to keep our building looking nice while anybody else might there, so. Another thing, I briefly missed this one, we're looking at using one of the street lights over there and try to convert over the LED so that we don't use nearly as much power. But I thought it was a nice little touch to the building.
The only thing is, we took the street lights out because of a potential danger because it made a core of the material where they could snap.
True. The problem with the ones downtown, they were hit by a lot of salt, you know, with the flowers pushing salt up out of the base. We took the newer ones that had a base that hasn't been, you know, exposed to that, those elements for quite as long. So the metal isn't going to be as brittle as the older ones. So we kept the best ones that we could for situations such as this.
Moving in pine trees, I think it looks better having them there, they just look more natural. This kind of looks like a prison, everything low. Is there a way you can push out that filter where maybe something further out that can catch these pine needles before they, like a filter over the filter?
The only way is if we cut all the pines straight up because they're literally feet from the building.
How big is that catch basin? Well, what I'm talking about, if you can attach some kind of filter that goes over the whole thing further out, it's not going to strip the water as much because the pine needles will catch on the outside of the larger unit you put in there.
But if you look at that first picture, all of this here is pine. Whenever we get a gust of wind from the north, from the northeast, they blow right out to the building.
So that whole road will member in?
It's all a member, yeah.
I don't think if you cut it straight up, it would stop, I would, pine trees probably forty feet from the back of my house and they still look like they're in a gutter now on my building.
I have the same problem, but I prefer to see my trees, so I clean them up more often.
Those are about the worst trees there are, those, those Norways. I had three roads between my neighbor and myself and decided to take the whole works down because there'd always either sticks falling or needles, pine cones, everything. Every time you move on, you had to clean them up. I think they're one of the poorest, if they were white pines or something, they'd be a little different, but them Norways, I think, are probably the.
Look pretty stabbing to me.
And when we looked at putting the white pines back, you know, we've got two little white pines here that we could put back, maybe closer to the road, so they wouldn't be nearly as close. But that was the thought behind what we're looking at here for the plan.
Right now, we don't have a budget for this.
True.
We've got, you know, get some pricing, we just wanted to at least run it by you. If you absolutely nod on some of these things, let us. it by you, and, and if you, you know, absolutely nod on some of these things, let us, let us know who's our, but, you know, I just think that, you know, the front of City Hall, and it's, the grass is dead, half weeds or more, I just, it's just isn't a, to me, a, a representation of what I think the city would like to see for its, its City Hall, and I think that, um, you know, doing the landscape planning and irrigating, part of it, I don't think we have to irrigate the entire grounds, but irrigating what you want to keep growing and, and look nice, I think, uh, makes a lot of sense, so.
It's not like you have to.
It's a little bit of investment, but I think it's, it's worth it.
You don't have to redo it every year, right?
Right.
One time you're invested.
Exactly.
It necessarily doesn't have to be pine trees you replace away, maybe something that grows a little quicker, uh, you know, spreads out a little more and doesn't draw needles. This looks like a Christmas tree farm when I see them, root the trees like that.
They're rooted trees completely. Well, if there's anything that's, you know, let us know in the group, I mean, we don't have...
It's not just a tree, it's a pine, or it's not necessarily what it's...
Let us know, we, I mean, we're going to come back to you with, uh, some additional information, but, uh, you know, we just thought, let's get the wheels rolling a little bit, I think this, uh, facility should work, like, so.
Mr. President, may I make a comment?
Go ahead, please.
Anybody who's got a flat roof, including my garages, has to do regular maintenance to sweep it off, whole lot cheaper, whole lot nicer than cutting down pine trees that were probably planted in the era of the pine trees in this whole area here. Uh, wouldn't it be a whole lot cheaper to just have somebody, a city crew member, go up there and sweep it off? Seems logical to me.
Thanks for your comment.
I'm sure there's a discussion more coming up if you can. Snowplow truck, Greg? The next one is the snowplow truck. Um, in our tentative budget that we started last year, you know, in terms of the capital improvement plan for equipment, we did include a pickup truck, or, excuse me, a haul truck, um, next year. Talking with the, the representative from Toomaster where we purchased our haul truck last year, in twenty fourteen, they indicated that, um, haul trucks are eligible, twelve to fourteen months. He said, if you were to order it today, which was last week, he said you wouldn't get it until November of twenty sixteen. So, I, I at least wanted to at least start the discussion with, uh, with the council here in terms of, um, a haul truck, because we're looking at, you know, twelve to fourteen months out in terms of, uh, where, would we be able to get delivery on it? Currently, um, as you can see in the, uh, in the memo that we, we've got there, we've got a ninety-four and ninety-five are our two older, uh, pickups, uh, or haul trucks. We'd be looking at replacing the, the, um, the ninety-four haul truck is the one we'd be replacing, because of its age, as well as the condition, um, of the motor and the, and the transmission, the roll of the box, looks like it's got a little bit more issues than the ninety-five, um, so we'd be looking at replacing that. The current pricing for the haul trucks is extended through the end of October, so we do have some time, um, and they indicated that the, um, the price increase from last year would be fifteen hundred dollars more for the next year's month, so when we get to twenty sixteen, we'd be looking at fifteen hundred dollars more for it. I didn't go through the, uh, the state bid with the fine tube comb, um, but that's what he had indicated, that officially fifteen hundred dollar increase, um, so I, I wanted to at least start the discussion and, and see where that would, would go, um, because we, we do have some older equipment out there that we're looking at updating, um, obviously budgets, time is coming up, and, and this is something that is one of the bigger items for, uh, for other street projects.
I think it's good you're looking at it, but it'd be nice to see your other items too, so we can figure out which ones are probably more important.
But do we budget for this, for this year? Yeah, not for, not for twenty fifteen, it's twenty sixteen items, we're just whispering over here, and, you know, we can have the capital budget done, you know, before the, end of October, you know, by that second meeting in October, so you can see how it fits in with the whole, to Frank's question, or competent, so, uh, but. So the thing is, we can, it's, would you say, November of twenty sixteen, so we wait another month, and that's off in the twenty seventeen budget, then we pay upon delivery?
We, we pay upon delivery, um...
Pay, do a chance. You pay the chassis when it's done, and then it goes to get the box, and follows the box, so.
And, and it might be, if that happens, it might work out then, that part of it comes out of sixteen, and part out of seventeen, and that way you aren't eating up half of your equipment fund, but just with one piece of equipment.
All right. Do we have any more to call or someone that we've prepared for, if there's any more?
We haven't, uh, the state bid is actually pretty inexpensive in terms of, uh, what we can get in for, you know, like a, a pickup truck, you know, we can buy one for thirty-five versus what you go to the, the dealer, it'd be fifty-four, so, to make sure that it, it matches the equipment that we want, we usually go right out to the state bid price, uh, for, for that.
I think, I talked with, uh, Neiman once before, on Fire Jump, you know, you're looking at it, and which you can buy, it's smashed up, fixed up, one forty, you can buy your one off the bids, and, you know, you see him sitting on it all the time, I, I know we're looking at the back truck, because they had a back truck down there, and we bought that too.
More, it's better on the new ones.
Right.
True.
Sometimes you can run it in there, sometimes you can get it via the... Anything else on the haul truck?
That's all I got.
Dan, Lori, anything? Nope? Here you go, it's down the drain, seven thirty.
Five minutes.